Hello and welcome to the March seventeenth, happy St. Patrick's Day, two thousand and two Select Board Meeting. It's not a special meeting, but it's an additional meeting we scheduled this this month just due to heavy agendas in general. And more or less one exception dedicated to for the Select Board to review the warrant. I guess without any further ado, I'd like to call this meeting to order and please ask the town administrator to please read the agenda.
Good evening, everybody. So after the call to order and the reading of agenda, the board can vote to approve or amend the agenda at a public comment session, but I have not been. Nobody's called me about a public comment. So the first item is the consideration discussion vote on the individual warrant articles for the two thousand and twenty-two annual town meeting warrant. And item number two was consideration of approval to utilize the funds of the DPW Fire and Police Surplus Equipment Revolving Fund with Chief Zach Ward and Chief Galvin. I asked the board earlier if we could maybe take item two first. So that both chiefs are here and they could explain to you about what their requests are.
Okay, is there any would like to move to actually amend the agenda?
Yes, I would move to make that adjustment to move up to front item two.
All right, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
I am as well. All right. So without any anything else on the agenda, I guess Diane, who would who's speaking on this?
Chief Zach Ward is here and Chief Galvin is here. They both have individual requests.
All right, who wants up first? They go back, please.
Do I have a lot of background noise right now?
I don't hear it.
Because people running chainsaws out front for for training, so I just wanted to make sure it wasn't.
There you go.
Just right here. So.
No, can't hear it.
Great. So I'm just real quickly, I think as the board is well aware, as we presented our capital items to the board. I think around a month ago, the fire department is requesting a UTV or utility terrain vehicle under the capital replacement plan for this year. And I think as you, as you all may recall, we had a sale of a command vehicle last year and and I think it you get some background information in your packet. You know, our full intention was to to use the money from the sale of that vehicle towards the the new vehicle we bought and and throughout the process, we learned that we couldn't do that. I believe that actually started when Selectment Duranzis actually made a comment at the the public hearing and through further discussions, we learned that we had to deposit the money into that revolving account for future use. And at the time, you know, there were comments from advisory and so forth about maybe reducing our budget for one year and all that. But I think the the game plan was to use it for future capital expense. And so we basically, we've gone through the process, the capital budget process. We've met with advisory and it's come up at both meetings that it might just make sense to to use the money from that command vehicle to go towards the UTV. And because that to expend those funds from that account requires a vote of the Select Board. That's why we're here tonight. And you know, I certainly take any other recommendations from the board, you know, I serve at the pleasure of the board and you know, I'm not sure if that's the route you want to go or if you want to go a different route, but um, that's why we're here.
So question.
Go ahead, Paul.
What is the spending limit that the town voted at town meeting for this revolving account?
It's fifty thousand dollars.
And what's the amount you're looking for?
So in my email, I wrote thirty-two thousand, but then some additional information's come in since then, so I would request up to thirty-five thousand, which is in that account from the sale of fire equipment over time. Basically, honestly, because of shipping, the vehicle is why I would ask for a little more.
Okay, so thirty-five thousand out of fifty.
Out of a spending limit of fifty, yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions to the board members? And just so I, that's the first time. Oh, so yeah, Paul, you have another one?
I was gonna move approve.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I can.
Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And George?
Hi.
And I am as well. Thank you. Before.
Thank you.
Chief Galvin?
So I have a request for authorization to spend six thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-five cents. So earlier this year, the department received two new police vehicles. And when, and this was prior to to my time with the department, when they made the determination on the outfit of the vehicles, the equipment that went into the vehicles exceeded the the capital article. So the capital article was used to pay for the vehicles, but we had some auxiliary equipment and additional lights that were added to the vehicles. So this payment would be to cover that that invoice for for the equipment that was installed into the vehicles.
Okay, so just to clarify, the the money's been spent. It's so we know exactly how much it's going to cost. It's just simply covering invoice.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions on board?
No, from the same fifty thousand dollars, I assume. So it's.
That's what I was gonna ask you.
Forty-one thousand, we just burned through. Good.
And to clarify, that's fifty thousand is an annual limit, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we have a chance to modify that at the town meeting. Do we have a article to set the spending limit for the upcoming year? It's a number that can vary. But for this year, it's fifty thousand. So I would I would move approval of the request from police chief.
Second, second.
One more comment I do want to make, we authorized Zach up to thirty-five thousand. If he spends thirty thousand, there was there's actually greater amount of money in that fifty thousand dollar cap.
Right.
Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
And Mary Ann?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
I might as well. Very good. Yeah, right, you both. Okay.
Eric, did you have your hand up or were you?
No, I did. I did have my hand up. I just had a quick question regarding this fund. I don't know if this is possible, but can the Select Board give maybe a small amount of authorization if the, you know, the DPW or the police chief or the fire chief want to spend maybe five hundred, six hundred dollars out of this account? Or do they need to come to a meeting every single time?
That's the way the law reads.
Yeah, okay, I didn't know if there was any kind of stipulation that you could make. That was my question. Thank you.
Okay, so moving on, the agenda about the consideration discussion and vote on individual warrant articles for two thousand and twenty-two. I want to clarify twenty-two for anyways, annual town meeting warrant. So two comments I want to say just before we begin on this. Number one, I want to make a clarification. I believe on your background material, it shows no vote under the citizens' warrant and citizens' article petition for walking pavement street. And actually was a voted not to support three to one. So you can put that in your in your checkbox there. And the other thing, at least I want to propose to the board is I'm hoping to limit this conversation simply to the those items we have not just already voted on. You can see a checklist. We voted on most of these articles here. So before we get started, I'm wondering, I'd like to hear from board members, one, if you support that idea. And two, if there's anything specific that we have voted on, you would like to rediscuss or bring up again, is there anything you see in your checklist? Which shows that we have voted on again, that maybe you want me to rebring up for discussion. Yeah, Paul?
So I want to eliminate item five B from article. Pull up. Five B is the fire department requests for a utility terrain vehicle for thirty-five thousand.
Makes sense.
Yeah, obviously, we just voted for that, so.
And I think from listening to advisory, I think that we also may get rid of the, I'm not sure what number it is, the trees, hundred fifty thousand for trees, because it's not capital.
I think they were gonna move it to a standalone and maybe that that's worth of discussion. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, be a separate article, because this article is fiscal year twenty-three capital improvement, so can't. It's not an improvement when you take his helps the town, but there's no asset to see where the tree's gone.
So to move that, do we have to open and close the warrant to make that a standalone article? That's what I believe that's what they talked about last night. We had to open and close the warrant. Yes. Paul, can that be done under this agenda item that we have here before us? Can we open and close the warrant, move this from capital to a standalone warrant article?
Yes.
Okay.
Don't we wait until the end of the meeting to open and close the warrant, just in case anything else comes up?
I was just gonna say that.
Yeah, so we'll skip it when we discuss. We'll discuss it at the end. Diane, you had your hand raised?
Diane, you need it.
Yeah. Okay, so the tree removal is on the earmark. And it's on the ARPA fund. So I think there was a discussion to remove it from the capital items. And to maybe make that if the board could vote, that they would definitely maybe use that as an ARPA request.
I personally support that. I'd rather see it as an ARPA request rather than a town me a warrant. It also allow it allows Sean to get started immediately on it. I have many reasons that's worthy of it, but.
That might be an actual vote that we could take, so we could have it for the record that the board voted to guarantee that that would be used for ARPA funds.
Okay, let's wait till we get there on the thing. It's a good discussion point, but let's wait till we get to the item. So versus eliminating and moving it, let we'll discuss it when it comes up naturally on the list as it is, even though, you know, it's listed capitals may be inappropriate, but it's it's there for a reason.
The only thing is, I don't think we can, we're not voted, ARPA isn't on the agenda tonight. So I don't think we can, we can't vote on the art. We could just refer it to that group.
Yep, we can basically eliminate it off of town meetings over there. Yeah. Okay, is there is there anything else that again has been voted on? So it shows support or any modifications that you'd like to kind of bring up, because otherwise I, you know, I prefer not to bring up something that's been voted on already.
So just a general comment, which is that the advisory hearing is on the twenty-sixth of March. We need to finalize this warrant soon, so.
That's the point of Favinus tonight.
That's why we had a whole special meeting.
Need to talk about it. Let's just do it.
So at the end of this this session, I hope that we'd entertain a motion to to approve the warrant as as finalized during this meeting. And to set up a time for us to sign it and get it issued and sent to advisory.
Okay, there is a, there might be one snafu on what item that'll come up. Then I talked to council earlier today when it comes up, so that'll be fun.
Is that because the one I was, you were asking for was we should reconsider. I think we, I'm looking for the home rule. The home rule one, I think we probably need to discuss again. I'm trying to see if we voted on that.
Mary Ann, no, we did not vote on it. I know we did not. Mary Ann has her hand raised. I'd like to organize her.
In in Article eleven, at least in the file that was sent for this meeting, the item of engineering service from April in Washington Roundabout, there's no figure there. Do we need that figure in order to vote the warrant?
I believe we do, and I was gonna wait till Sean discusses on that. Sean did text that he's gonna be a few minutes late. I'm looking on anyway, so I think we discussed that when it comes up, but you're right, we will need a dollar amount when that comes up. Sean, if it's about that one, I'd like to wait till it comes up, you know, I mean, when it comes up, then we discuss it. But just to answer the straight question, I believe we would need a dollar amount to actually vote on it.
That's exactly what it was about, but as I was raising my hand, you said you know, I just wanted you to see I was here.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, so it sounds like we've addressed the answer our questions. Again, I won't go into any specific garden now. It does sound like we're all set on the stuff we've already voted on. So any further ado, I'd like to actually just start right in on the on the very first article.
Can I make a motion that we vote to support Articles one, two, six, seven, and eight?
Someone did their homework. That's awesome.
Yeah, 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 this is your consent agenda version, huh?
Exactly.
This is the wife's birthday agenda.
Exactly.
Okay, we have a motion. If no one else seconds it, I will. We have a second on that.
Second, second, sorry, second.
Just a question before you vote?
Yep.
The time reports. I assume notwithstanding the the departure of the town administrator and so on and so on, that that's in process and is being printed and will be available and we're gonna do like we did in prior years and and offer people the chance to pick up a hard copy if they want and all that kind of stuff. Is that is that being taken care of?
Yes.
Yes.
It's not ready yet. It'll go to the printer. The postcard for the town will go out the first, I believe, April first. And then the report will be ready to pick up twenty-one days before town meeting.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Gina. Absolutely. All right, so I have a motion. Deb?
Yeah, yeah, I just had a question on Article two for the supplementals. Are you voting on dollar amounts right now or can I revisit those? There was a little bit of a snowstorm last week. I'm not sure what those numbers are. And the police overtime supplemental, we might not need to fund that as much. I've been going back and forth with Chief Galvin, and he thinks he might have enough money in there to cover that.
That's typically not that the supplementals have in the past, always changed right up until town meeting.
Okay, that's why I just wanted to make sure that you weren't voting on a dollar amount.
The snow numbers in the warrant on this article.
The snow number, I believe, is a hundred thousand, but and that was a guesstimate about a month ago, so it might may have changed slightly.
Okay.
So which items did we just do on a consent? We did say them again, George, one, two.
We did one, two, six, seven, and eight. I I stopped before the omnibus budget.
Okay, good.
All right.
So we're OPEB then, but we voted that already. So the next one we have, it looks.
Not yet, though. So Jeff, if you don't mind, I'm just gonna collect the vote. So we have a motion, a second for George's consent agenda. I guess all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
I'm Mary Ann.
Hi.
Now, Paul?
Hi, but there's some blanks on Article seven.
I don't see any blanks. I see numbers for each of them.
On mine, it's just. One unit.
What's that?
Mine says council on aging, one unit.
So seventy-five thousand dollar limit. Do you look at the most recent email from Jeannie where she sent the clean warrant and checklist?
This is the red line.
I'm looking at the clean warrant that Jeannie sent Wednesday at four oh four P M.
Right.
I'm looking at and print out that Diane made for me and gave me. It might be in your email. Paul?
Yeah, it was Wednesday afternoon.
From Jeannie? I don't see it.
Huh?
I have one from.
Again.
One from Tuesday and one from.
It's literally labeled.
Email Wednesday afternoon that had everything in it.
And it's labeled clean warrant.
Yeah.
I'll send it now, Paul.
It had both in it. He had the red line.
Send it to me.
Clean, yeah.
I get too many things in my inbox. Don't send it to me.
No, I'll send it to Paul.
Okay.
But we've already voted on three, four, five is what I was saying, Eric.
So I didn't. That's why I skipped over them.
Yeah.
All right, Paul, let me know if you're all set.
Well, yeah, if it's a number so there, then I'm fine.
Yeah. Total number is one million, three hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred.
One million, three hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred is the total.
What's what's the spending? Nothing has come through. So what's the spending limit on the the DPW Police Surplus Vehicle?
Sixty-three thousand.
Sixty-three for next year?
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks.
Okay. All right, I'll collect the vote now. I believe I've already gotten Jeff's and Mary Ann's. Paul, how do you vote?
Hi.
And George?
Hi.
Okay, very good. So moving on, we have item number ten, the FY twenty-three omnibus budget. We've obviously gone through this a bit. Are there any additional questions or concerns on the budget?
Let me just ask Article eight, was that already approved? I mean, Article nine?
Yeah.
Yeah.
On two twelve.
If you look at the checklist, Mary Ann, it shows which ones we've approved.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I don't have the checklist.
Yeah, the checklist Jeannie marked or Diane marked everything that we voted on. That's why.
Yeah.
Were the ones I skipped over three, four, five, and nine because we voted on them.
Yeah.
Was was that was the checklist in the same email as the clean?
No, yes.
I think it was a different, I think it was a different one.
No, it was in the clean.
It was in this, it's in the same one, Mary Ann.
Huh.
Yeah.
Okay.
The clean warrant and the eighteen, in the article checklist.
Okay.
Okay, so any discussion among the Select Board, Select Board, or is there any new information perhaps from either Finance Director or Town Administrator regarding the?
I think, I mean, we're over guiding some things, but I think it's justifiable when it comes to like the I T and the H R director, and we kind of pulled back a little bit on the town administrator salary to kind of offset it a little bit. We don't have any say over some of the items in the budget, like schools or or a few others that don't report to the Select Board. So I think everything that we've done with our budgets, I would I would make a motion to support the omnibus budget for twenty twenty-three.
Okay, do you have a second or further discussion?
Yeah. Well, I have a question for George is that, you know, sometimes we don't vote on this one until the public hearing, because what they do, you know how they vote the whole budget and then people have a chance to put a hold on it.
That's a good point, Jeff.
I wonder.
Do I like that idea that we wait till Saturday?
I'm thinking.
Budget once we can hear more discussion along with advisory. That's a good idea.
That's why I was proposing that we not not vote on this one now. And there may be some holds that we're not aware of that could come up.
I'll withdraw my motion then.
I see Debbie's using her hand.
What did I clap instead of raise it?
Raising it pushes you in the top of the list, that's why.
Okay, I just I just wanted to make you aware last night at advisory. They requested that the sustainability coordinator salary that was originally budgeted in the planning board budget be moved to the sustainability department. And I had sent Diane an email to make sure that was okay with her, and I just want to make sure that that's okay with you all. If I make that move, it's not changing any dollar values. It's just making it a little bit more transparent.
Yeah, I was I was I was disturbed to hear that when we had the discussion with the sustainability coordinator and the energy committee, it wasn't made clear that any of Gino's salary was not included in the analysis that she provided. That that just seemed not transparent at all.
Yeah, that that's that's how the previous town administrator had it set up, and then we just moved along with that. But you're absolutely right. So I think this will make it a lot clearer.
Okay, yeah, I think we need to have more discussion on that on Saturday with the advisory.
So to clarify, Gino's salary, some is still on planning board and some isn't, okay.
Yes, his plant, his salary for the planning board remains there, but just for the work he does for the sustainability, we'll move to the sustainability, the new sustainability department.
That seems very appropriate. I have no problem with that. Okay, so unless anyone has an issue with it, we'll go past this one. I'll make a vote on this one. Now, will that make an issue? Paul wants to sign the warrant or whatever else. Will that be an issue if we actually wait until Saturday? Oh, bless you. Wait until Saturday to make a final vote on the bus budget here?
The board itself has no numbers in it. The warrant that we signed, it just has a generic article. The budget's in a separate document.
Okay, it shouldn't make difference. So we can still vote on the warrant. At the end of the day, we don't necessarily have to vote on supporting the omnibus budget tonight.
Right, right. All right, so any further do I move on to number eleven, the improvement plan? I'll simply take them in order unless anyone wants to go out of order, but take them in order. We have first up the elder housing for the windows. Who is speaking on this? The Woodhaven Windows, three hundred thousand dollars. If there's no one.
We've already discussed these. It was more, I think we waited to vote until we saw all of them. Yep, so I don't think we need to have a repeat question unless somebody has any specific questions or maybe vote on them one by one, but but I don't think we need to rehash what we already heard. We just, like I said, we just didn't vote on them until we'd actually seen the whole picture.
I mean, unless someone wants to present the kind of consent when we group certain ones together, like I personally want to hear from Sean's, you know, I mean, stuff like that. I watched advisory last night, a few things. I think fencing, we actually heard about that one and Woodhaven Replacements. Anything else? Pine Hill School?
We had a presentation on that.
We did.
Yeah.
And. We'll lump those together. Do you want to lump together window replacement, farm fencing, cruiser, we did hear from about the cruiser, might have even voted on it, to be honest with you.
And the fire department as well. Well, we took out the utility train.
Breathing apparatus. Do you want to vote on those items? I don't, I don't have sub numbers in mind. I apologize for that, but basically it's window replacement, farm pond fencing, breathing apparatus, and new police cruiser.
And Pine Hill School.
Well, Pine Hill School's apparently been voted on, at least in my checklist.
Yeah, we did vote on that, sorry.
We did. We did both schools.
Before we take, before we take a vote, Deb, do you have something?
Yeah, the Pine Hill School number actually went down to sixty-eight thousand. We discussed it at the capital budget meeting the other night, and Don had reduced that number from seventy-five to sixty-eight.
Then we should open up. I'll vote against it now. No, I think a vote can remain the same. I don't know if anyone wants to reopen that, but I think the vote can remain the same.
On any of the ones we voted, you know, we're thinking we can approve that, but we're thinking of maybe considering ARPA funds for some of these or not. I don't know.
I think we are. We'll see when the.
I think this is just approving the expenditure and we could fund it from excluded debt or or ARPA funds.
We don't really decide that. That's, you know, that's really a decision advisory.
Yeah, I'm just thinking out loud.
Yeah, okay, I I recommend to vote positive on these four items, even if our profundity is on the table there. Yeah, at least it's 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 making a statement that the Select Board does recommend town funding if necessary. You know, if it gets, if it happens to get up funded, great. I think the only one that might be a little different discussion might be the trees, but that's not up here. Okay, so I I'm recommending four items for a.
Which were the fourth, window replacement, farm pond fencing, it's the police cruiser, right?
Yeah, and breathing apparatus.
The breathing apparatus.
Breathing apparatus, okay. Yeah, I would second that. I would move that we approve those four capital items, three hundred thousand, twenty-five, four oh seven, sixty-five thousand and police cruiser, fifty-six thousand.
Okay, so all in favor, and I have a second from George for the record. So all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And George?
Hi.
All right. So I guess first off, where we do hear something about it is the engineering services to design a roundabout for the Washington Maple Sanger Streets intersection. All right, John, you're up.
So after much work and a handful of discussions with our engineer, Bill Scully, we we've come up with a decent quote for the engineering services. And just so everyone understands, we went through this last night, too. A couple of times it was referred to as an engineering study. It's not an engineering study. It's the it's the engineering services to to build up the design and basically get the project shovel ready and and biddable. So including the contingency, the the ask we'd like to have in the warrant is a hundred and fifty thousand and not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand.
And I'll ask one question. So Sean, is that to take it to the twenty-five percent appropriate for MPO tips?
Actually, I think it's beyond twenty-five percent. I mean, it's gonna be, it's gonna be biddable.
Okay. Okay, that's the main thing. I know we, because we discussed it before, the main thing I care about is, you know, take it appropriate that can be submitted to the Mast or, you know, on the Mast D O T review, but it's actually under the Metropolitan Planning Organization for the Transportation Improvement Program. You need to get to twenty-five percent to submit it for them to review and so on and so forth like that. And sometimes these smaller projects, because they do projects in the tens of millions of dollars. Right, and you got a sub-million dollar project. Sometimes they literally fit it in on the margin of error of other projects there.
Yeah, and and we haven't done that, and and we're not really doing that with this. We're we're going a little bit beyond that to be out to bid because we're really not gonna have those steps essentially. We, I mean, we'll we'll be putting it out to bid with probably I would guess sixty to seventy percent.
Okay, Mary Ann, you had a question?
Yeah, between this engineering service to twenty-five percent, you know, actually.
Actually useful for building uh and the actual shovel in the ground. What more studies or engineering work has to be done and what's the estimate for that?
What?
I mean, is there, there's.
You mean outside of this?
Yeah, yeah, outside of this ask, is there more?
It would usually be, you know, it would be. It would be similar to like what we did at Pine Hill where the, the construction admin. Um, portion comes into play once it's beyond out, you know, when you go under contract. It's construction admin and you, and it's usually rolled into your costs at the, at the other end as you're building it.
Okay, so I mean, if the question comes up, is this going to get us to where we can put it out to bid and get the process started? The answer is yes.
Yes, this gets us to awarding a bid.
Anyway, I'll jump in a little bit. There's two levels. So basically, if you funded yourself in the town funding, the level you need to get it to. To bid it is less than the level you need to get it for tip funding. I believe, I, I'm just kind of reading what John's saying. I believe it's, it's still enough to get it to the twenty-five percent. So let's say the town decided it didn't want to put the million dollars forward, whatever, it might be like a million dollars. Didn't want to put the million dollars forward to actually construct it, you still can actually take that design and submit it to the state for tip funding. The downside is it takes several years. You don't get it right away, but it's been years since we've done this. So I think there's some flexibility and Sean correctly, I think flexibility where we want to actually. Take it to a level to submit to tip funding or take it to a level to go out to bid um for town funding. Um, I, I, I think it should be done essentially either way, if that makes any sense. So you at least have a design. And you can just win the tip, it'll go through their network and so on like that, but. It gets scored and so on. The tip is almost certainly, certainly going to be a mechanism. Where it's going to be infused with the um, the federal um infrastructure bill funds. And that's one of the reasons I bring it up. Right now, tip is actually short funded where their five-year plan, they're funding zero in the fifth year. And they're, the money they have for the five years is only going out four years because the prices have escalated so much among COVID and, and other reasons. It's just crazy. That all the cost is blowing out the door. So all the approved projects are just like, you know, skyrocketing up there, but. Um, just based on, you know, Obama stimulus and everything else that, you know, when you get the federal funding, it's going to go through certain. Certain existing uh grant mechanisms and almost certainly is going to be the, the, the tip. So. As long as this is situated as well to get into the, the tip process, I certainly support it.
Uh huh, sounds good.
And I'll, I'll, and on top of that, I'll remind everyone that this is. At, you know, the next one up for the um, the next tier of the complete streets funding. So we've already basically slated. Money that would be asked for um in the next round. As you recall, we just got awarded some that, that, that will be spent this year on a sidewalk. That was kind of the tail end of the last year. So the intent is this design is done and ready. It's presentable and we're, you know, we, we can comfortably ask for it in the next round. Uh, complete streets probably won't, will not pull through and fund the entire. It might, it might be half of um. What we think we'll spend, but we, we're certainly allowed to and we have combined several different um grants. We did that with the North Main Street. Sidewalk where we, we combined several grants, so the taxpayers really didn't put much of a bill.
That's awesome.
Sounds good.
Awesome, absolutely. All right, do I have a motion relative to this uh item?
Well, I move that we approve the uh request for engineering service for the Maple and Washington Street Roundabout.
Okay.
You gotta give a dollar.
Dollar amount.
Oh, at one hundred and fifty thousand.
All in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And George? And just to make it twice, I've been saying move to prove, but we say move to support, just the.
Yeah, that's, yeah, definitely.
Okay, um, next up, uh, town buildings facilities, hundred ninety thousand dollars.
We, we already went through these, but I think the update would be, maybe Heidi can update. Um. Where we decided we'd pull that from. I think that was going to be borrowed money, correct? So that needs to be on the ballot?
Yes.
So someone remind me then, some needs to discuss, some we haven't, and I just don't have a good memory on that.
I, we discussed all of these, I think, with Sean, right, Sean?
Have we discussed MS four compliance? I don't remember that one, and that's something I would remember.
That Eric might not have been there when I went through these slides.
Oh, was this one, I was like the meeting?
It might be, and I apologize. I'm on my tablet, so I don't have the slides.
No.
So I'll go from, I'll go from memory. I mean, the one ninety was a carryover number. From last year's, you know, we did a five-year, but we basically have a twenty-five year, but we plugged in five years of expected ask for town buildings. And that's really, really, really a conservative number at this point because we didn't go back and reset the entire onsite insight report to. Capture the escalation from um, you know, COVID. It's, I mean, it's no secret that construction projects right now are through the roof. Um, we've, we tapped the brakes on a few, so we're sitting on a, a fair amount of cash, but. There's projects that are ready to bid that we just, we held back on. So the, the one nineties, that's the number that was in. This fiscal year and last year's ask, you know, the, the future years, it's always there. So that's all I did was pull that in.
You know, and, and I do apologize if this was presented and that um, that's bad on me. And maybe if someone can actually, maybe Jeff as vice chair, you can tell me, or someone can tell me uh which ones we did discuss. The only one I'd want to bring up a little bit, because I thought there's new information at the advisory program, it might be roadway management and trees. But as far as uh MS four compliance and equipment, was that adequately discussed previously?
Yeah.
All right.
Eric, feel free to talk about MS four.
Well, if you want to hear it though, Eric, if you want to hear it, there's not, you know, we're.
Preview, because my fault that I wasn't at that.
Well, I know, but.
No, it's fine. And it was, and it was, it was relatively new because I hadn't plugged anything in in the original ask.
And frankly, I watched. And I did advise you last night, you know, I mean, so I got a preview of it. I actually listened to advisor.
So just to kind of go over it. Um, everyone will remember it was, it was two years ago, two town meetings ago where we, you know, we put in money into the. Into the, you know, the same article. So we draw off that each year. We're going to continue increasing our efforts on the phosphorus reduction. Due to being in the Charles River watershed, that's part of the MS four permitting. Um, so that's mandated and, and those efforts are going to step up this year. Everyone's going to see that. Um, and that comes with a cost, just even just in the consulting. Um, we, it, it's no secret, we have some stormwater. Things we need to work on. We don't have a price tag on what we're going to spend and we won't get in depth in it, but there's some money that's going to be spent. There's already been money spent. For the um Silverwood Farm, Dopping Brook area. This is the fund that, that pays for the ADCOM work for all throughout town.
And I do want to make a global comment about MS four, just so people don't get their expectations incorrect here. The MS four is, is far just that, the NIPD's MS four compliance, really all that affects is water quality, stormwater quality within the MS four area. If something's outside of the area, not applicable to it. If something's a flooding issue, it's really not an MS four issue. MS four has very little to do with flooding. Outside of like maybe, you know, reach, um, you know, recharge is considered the best form of treatment and that it can uh have a side effect of a controlling flooding. So I want to have people have this appropriate expectation, you know, when you, when you um vote for MS four flood um permitting. Doesn't mean we're stopping flooding a silverwood farms. So just uh people know then, whatever. All right, any motions relative to uh, to MS four?
Yeah, I would move that we approve uh MS four in the amount of uh two hundred thousand.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And George?
Hi.
All right, uh, next up, equipment. That's been active to talk about, I'm fine.
Did, did we vote on the town buildings?
You didn't vote on equipment.
Let, let's, let's vote on the town building. I'll make a motion to approve at a hundred and ninety thousand.
All in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi, hi.
And George?
Hi.
And next up, equipment.
So that um, it took me a while to get some quotes for the same reasons with the. The way the economy is right now, but what I presented and will be going over with capital budget in the next uh, next meeting they have. Is uh, a small roller, a trailer that their roller resides on and an, and another compactor. Those are. We've always had a roller, it's very old and it um, it, and its trailer way beyond their life, um, useful life, so. We'll sell that off in the surplus line and um, pick up those. That's, that's it for the equipment. And it's thirty, I hope you have it in front of you.
Thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five K, yeah.
I think it's actually thirty-six too, if that matters.
Hmm.
Um, uh, oops.
We want to make sure we vote on the right amount, so.
Yeah, I, I, I know.
Get thirty-five thousand in, in our background here.
Yeah, that, and that's what we had in there, but I updated it. I mean, that would work if we wanted to hold to that. I'm trying to, again, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find it on my phone while I'm on my tablet. Want to go to a different one? We can talk through till I find the right one.
Maybe roadway management, because I thought you gave some interesting information. Um, I wasn't aware about the uh, at advisory, especially about the reclamation on uh Goulding and Woodland.
Right, and I, and I'm, you know, it put me a little bit ahead of myself because normally I would have come to you to ask you. You know, to, to propose it. Uh. But then again, I'd be proposing something I don't have the money for, so it, it's a little bit of a catch twenty-two, but what? The long and short is everyone remembers the presentations we've had about, you know, roadway management and. Working on some of the roads before they fall off. We're, we're mixing that up a little bit this year because we have two roads that are just completely unbearable. Um, it, that, we can't stop having to fix them almost daily. The people living on them are driving across a road that's frankly not much better than what the Hargraves were talking about with their gravel road. Um, and, and there also.
Which roads are those?
Sorry, so this is Goulding Street West. And Woodlands, Woodland Street, the section of Woodland Street that connects from South Main to Goulding Street West.
I just wanted to make sure Woodland was one of those streets we're talking about.
Right, and so it's kind of that triangle there. What happened?
Yeah.
Those roads are as old as any others. There was basically a bad coat of asphalt put over them. Um, after one of the bad winters, there was a lot of paving that got done. It, it not only failed, but it, it caused a situation where we, there's not, we have no choice but to reclaim the entire road, which is just. Like, they bring the mill out and they just grind it up, turn it back into the dirt, grade it and start rebuilding it. Um, the benefit there is in my career, I'll never touch that road probably again. It's, it's expensive. That's what you're trying to avoid with, with good roadway management practices. You don't want to let roads get to that point. Unfortunately, we did. Um, so there's, there's no choice. I've, I've held off as long as I could. Um, but that's also one of those, it, it, it does get more costly, would have been cheaper last year, thanks to oil prices. Um, but we, we can't wait much longer, so between that and. The flip side, we're gonna. Um, I'm going to be asking to do a rubber chip seal on North Main Street from the lights to the town line and the Natick Town Line. The reason for that is the opposite. I'm trying to catch that road before it completely falls apart. Um. It'll, it's, it'll be incredibly costly if we have to mill it down and repave it. And half of that section is one of the newer sections of um. Our main roads. It just, it just didn't hold together. It got, it had to get crack sealed within a year when it got put down, so we either save what's there or we let it go to the point where it'll fall apart. Those two projects make up the lion's share of what, what uh we plan on doing. And then, of course, you know, you infill with, you have to hold on to some money for things like the culvert that fell apart last year. Um, so we'll be combining, we'll be combining the five hundred thousand with, what will now be two years worth of chapter ninety. Um, and those are two sixty each a year.
I mean, there'll, there'll be a couple of comments I have on this, obviously in support of this, is um, one, I, I think you've said there was a couple of culverts on the Goulding Street. And if you can maybe just assess the condition if you haven't already before you put a, you know, reclaimed uh road on top of it. And um, what was the other thing? You know, I'm surprised it needs to reclaim, but it, I'm sure it does. And it's a classic example of just, uh, Sean called it bad asphalt and it was, I don't think it was hot enough. If you look at that, um, look at that, look at Forest Street, you can tell one lane was put down hot. And the next lane was put down cold and one lane was completely falling apart. Not just simply like it didn't, you know, they didn't have like heated trucks or what it was. Um, but it's been falling apart since, I don't know what, two or three years after it was laid down. Absolute waste of town's money and um, it was done be, well before Sean was here, but it should, it should not be in the condition that it's in right now. It's very unfortunate. And um, I know Sean's young enough, I hope it's good for the rest of his career.
Thanks. All right, I'll vote to uh, to support. Article for three hundred and fifty thousand.
Uh, Sean had actually changed that number to five hundred thousand.
Oh, five hundred thousand, I'm sorry, okay, five hundred thousand.
And also, I don't know if it matters for this vote, but I believe last night. The discussion landed on splitting that to two hundred free cash. And three hundred would be bonded, so it'll still hit the ballot. But it would, it would allow us to spend um, two hundred after town meeting rather than waiting till July first.
Yeah, that is what they discussed and I support that as well. I actually support, to be honest, given that chapter ninety is never sufficient. It's been the same for a decade plus. And has not even come close to adjusting for asphalt index prices and the legislature never seems at, at all excited about it, about increasing it. That I think we permanently should actually put in the actual operating budget, not bond it, but an operating budget supplemental funds onto chapter ninety. That's in my opinion, all, all. For a while now, but all that being. I wonder, I wonder if it requires two votes, because technically to take it out of um, uh, whatever retained earnings. Or out of free cash, whatever you want to call it, you actually need a fifty percent vote. So I'm curious if the, if advisory's splitting it, we'll split the items on the warrant.
So we've done it before. Um, we did it a handful of years ago with town buildings where. I remember there was a four hundred and sixty thousand, but actually, you know what? It was two different articles.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, I think we.
Jeff, I think you were on advisory.
I was, I think it was two articles. Because, because usually advisory doesn't, we didn't usually till after the public hearing decide whether we're using free cash. Or uh, uh, you know, excluded debt, but I don't remember ever having one article be split between the two. I think it was one or the other. So we probably need to split this one into two. Well, because, because um. Go ahead, Eric.
Well, I was just saying, like, I would like to vote as it is here, because it's more conservative potentially, because it causes two thirds, we vote for the entire five hundred to be bonded. And then frankly, on Saturday, if they want to talk about it and split it, we can actually address it at that time.
Okay.
Well, um, the, the only thing is, we're going to have to open the warrant tonight already for the trees and the UTV. So if we were going to split it, we have to open the warrant on Saturday as opposed to signing it now. I think, am I wrong?
You're, you're wrong because the, the chart under the article is below the line, so. That's not really part of the warrant, the formal warrants, the, the language above.
Okay.
So we're free to change any of those items at any time. If it was part of the article, then we're locked in, but it's not, it's not the article itself. It's what's called below the line.
Okay, that's fine. I'm, I'm with you. So I don't think, I think you moved in, George moved in no, I second. I don't think anyone's seconded yet. Was that where we were?
Correct, George moved in no one a second, exactly.
I, I seconded it.
Okay, so all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
I'm all, I, okay, so how do I want to do trees? Trees is the last item on here, under the capital we haven't talked about yet. Um, do I discuss any um, just it's fundamental aspects and at the end move it to a standalone? What do people think?
You, you asking me or the board?
I'm asking the board, actually.
Um, okay. I, I wasn't on, I didn't listen to, I know you guys listened to advisory last night. What were they talking about with this? I did not.
It can't be under capital because it's not an asset, it won't, you know, it's.
Right.
It's like demolition or something, you know?
What, what did advisory think of the total amount? Hundred fifty?
They were fine.
Think okay with the amount.
Yeah, I think there was no aspect about the actual project itself or anything else or the cost. It's just more just administrative, like, does it belong here or should it be a standalone, a standalone article?
We should, I think, I agree. I think we should move it to a standalone article.
Yeah, I agree with that too, but I, I'm wondering, you know, if uh Sean gets halfway through the year and he needs more than a hundred and fifty, what's his recourse?
What he done before, reserve fund transfer or something like that?
He, he has fifty in his base DPW budget, I think, don't you, Sean? So it's in addition to the base budget, I believe.
Yeah, I was keeping that a secret, but yes.
I know, I'm, I'm not good at secrets. My kids don't tell me anything.
Fun transfers we've done in the past, so.
So legally, what we should be doing right now is striking this item from this article.
Right.
And then do it all in. And then do an open and, open and close at the end of this, with any.
Add it, add as a new article, yeah.
While we're here, we should strike item four D.
Let me hear from Deb, though, before we, uh, take a motion relative to that.
Well, I, I think Diane mentioned it earlier. There was a lot of talk of just moving it to ARPA and not even having it on the warrant. I don't know if that's an option or not, but, um, Sean does have like twenty-five thousand dollars in the capital budget for removal of trees from the A T M nineteen, and he does have some money left over in the operating expense for this year. And then he gets the operating expense for next year, so he has, you know, as of July first, he would have access to like a hundred and nine thousand dollars.
See, ARP is tough. Here, here's actually my issue with moving targets type things. It's also number one on our list of earmarks. We had, we had basically a whole list of, I don't know, like fifteen earmarks. This made number one. If any R M R comes, it might be due to this one. In some ways, maybe it's safer to actually include it as, as a, um, as the article, and then we'll see where these moving pieces go. So I don't think I'm gonna talk about ARP in two weeks. It might be in four weeks, just based on what I've seen. But either way, I think there's too many moving pieces, because if we eliminate it, then you're locked into one of those other, um, other, uh, other options, you know what I mean? Um, Mary Ann, what do you think?
I agree with that. I'm uncomfortable with deciding tonight that it's going to be done with ARPA funds, because uh, the ARPA fund issue is not on the warrant tonight, and we're really not discussing. I mean, it may be a, a great idea, but I don't think it belongs in this discussion.
It'll lock our hands, or whatever the term, whatever the term is. It'll, it'll force us into that. Hey, uh, Diane, let me ask you a question. Do you know when we expect to hear about the earmarks?
Well, according to, um, the conversation I had with Jen, it might take until the fall. She said you don't hear right away, so she's thinking sometime during the fall that we should hear, and she, and she also thinks I might get some questions in the meantime, and nobody has, um, reached out to me yet.
Okay, because those top four items we have under the earmarks, I'm even hesitant to me consider ARP funding for them. I'd hate to like do ARP funding and then it gets approved for an earmark, you know? And they're not big dollar amounts, so there might just be a token, let's give Sherburne a hundred fifty grand type of thing in there. Um, all right, I, I advocate keeping this, uh, devoted to, um, keeping on the warrant in general, but crossing out here, so maybe a motion to eliminate out of the capital funding here. And then, uh, I think I would advocate for a motion at the end of this entire thing to put it back on the warrant as a standalone. That's my thought. I have a motion relative to, uh, eliminating it from, uh, striking it from this line here.
Correct. So I'll move, I'll move that we, we, we're gonna do that after. We're gonna open the warrant when we do that.
We have to strike it, though, now. Like, now I think is an appropriate time to strike it from the, uh, capital line item.
Okay.
Make a motion to remove the tree removal from the capital article.
Okay.
Do, well, do you want to make a double motion? Because the utility vehicles, two lines down, we're doing the same.
Oh, yeah, and, and the utility train vehicle.
Very good.
Remove four D and five B.
Yep, a second.
Okay, uh, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Uh, Mary Ann?
Hi.
Uh, Paul?
Hi.
And George?
Hi.
Okay, excellent. Oh, I might as well, sorry. You'll have to be four to one there. Okay, next up is, um, that's done with capital, is a, I, um, article number thirteen, use of free cash.
Just to check, there's one more we didn't, we didn't go back to.
Uh, okay, Sean, sorry, what I missed?
The equipment was thirty-six, five. We didn't vote on that, because we didn't have that amount, right?
Oh, it's thirty-six, five, okay, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the equipment line item for thirty-six, five.
Second.
All in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Diane? I mean, Eric, I might as well, sorry. I didn't call out people in the order I see them. I'm way going through the motions here, sorry about that. Okay, so now moving on to Article thirteen, use of free cash. Seems straightforward. Any, any, uh, issues with this? Any questions or motions?
No, I'll move to, move to support Article thirteen, use of free cash.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Uh, Mary Ann?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
And I might as well. Okay, uh, next up, uh, for Article fourteen, what I have my checklist as amend to vote Article fifteen, and then on Article voice as amend Chapter seven A of the General Bylaws, Council of Aging.
We have voted on those already. We already supported.
Now, you're right, right, but, um, I'm showing number fourteen, I meant to vote Article fifteen on my checklist. So my checklist is not consistent. Well, what's, I'm showing, um, with the, the, what we call the final that Genie sent out. So.
I think it's the same. It's, it's twenty-twenty-one town meeting.
I may have, you know, I might have an old printout of the checklist.
Fourteen and fifteen. No, they're, they're right. Uh, no, wait, hold on.
Yeah, they're, they're same on mine, the checklist.
Yeah, they are, but it's, it's the, it's the two thousand twenty-one, we're, this is the two thousand twenty-two town meeting, but this is referencing week one from last year.
Let me do it. I'm, I'm honestly looking at a printout that might be older, so let me just do this real quick. Let me, uh, look at Genie's checklist.
What do you want?
Fourteen is the council on aging, right?
And we already voted, yeah, and we wrote it on that.
No, I definitely have an older checklist that I printed out, so I apologize for that.
Yep.
Um, okay, moving on, but, but, but would be Article sixteen. Let me make sure. Unfortunately, my eyes are bad, so I, I still gotta rely on my printout, so someone let me know if I'm wrong.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, fifteen, we've already voted on?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, actually, so sixteen, damn it, sorry, edit that out. Uh, it's, um, now, now my numbers are all off. I have to go.
Sixteen is the town administrator, Eric.
Yeah, 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 let me see. Hold, hold on, let me just. Get my stuff.
We have the two, the town administrator and finance director.
I'm just frustrated, and I can't rely on my printout. I have to go on, I have to go on, um, I, I have to open it up and work, whatever it is.
All right, let me, let me talk about Article sixteen for a second. I worked with Amanda's already, and we added, we talked about this last time, where we're gonna move to have, um, the, oh, the, the town administrator, I don't think we did make any changes to that. That was one that we were going to change, that we're gonna take out the three years in effect of June fifteenth, change the H R portion and the I T portion. We didn't, I didn't make any changes since last week when we discussed it.
Yeah, that, and that looks good.
My, my only reservation, but you know, I didn't, I didn't do any more research into it, so my, my reservation, and I'm not gonna stop the vote, was that now the bylaws are silent with H R Director, and that's my only reservation, that, you know, if you make town administrator or say optional or something, there is no mention of an H R Director in the bylaws. This is essentially eliminating a portion, so that was only my, uh, reservation on it. I felt as though it kind of needs some cleanup, but just, that kind of wasn't the time to do it. I one hundred percent support the three, the elimination of a three-year contract requirement. I think that has to be done no matter what. I think I, I'm pretty sure Paul, I will speak for him, but supports elimination of the H R department requirement, but at some point, we have to go through this and kind of, uh, clean up on what to do in H R Director in the bylaws if we take this out. So I'd say it's a point of concern, that's all.
You can create the position without a bylaw, number one. Number two, I'm, I'm hoping that, uh, since you put a stipend in, that we can use that stipend and designate somebody. And the way it's usually done is in other town, well, not usually, it's a variety of things, but I've frequently seen that the assistant town administrator becomes slash H R Director. And that would mean additional stipend for the assistant town administrator.
Yep.
So I think that we can use the stipend as a means of creating the position.
Okay. So all that being said, uh, any motions relative to, uh, this change of bylaw?
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve, uh, the town administrator, uh, bylaw revision, Chapter three, six.
Jeff, use the word support, not.
Support, I'm sorry, support the, uh, amended general bylaws for the town administrator.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
Uh, Paul?
Hi.
And George?
Hi.
I'm also I. Okay, next up is, um, no, it's seventeen. Sorry, I know, I, I'll, I'll get it. Give me a second, because I'm now, I'm now looking at more, I'm now like, you know, I'm, I'm flipping around. My computer screen is this big, and now I got like six windows open, because I can't use the paper, so I'm, I'll be.
You guys did a great job, George, though. This is well worded.
Yeah, so I, so I changed it after our discussion last week, where we said it would report to the town administrator, and then the finance director kind of shall have direct access to the select board to consult on financial operations. I think that's kind of what we came up to as a compromise last week.
Absolutely, it's great.
That's perfect, perfect.
Okay, yeah, I definitely support it. Okay, do I have motion relative to this?
Motion to support Article seventeen.
Uh, second.
Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Uh, Mary Ann?
Hi.
Uh, Paul?
Hi.
And George?
Hi.
Okay. I think. Yes, I am I, wholeheartedly I. It's a great idea. And thank, I want to thank George for doing a fair amount of legwork with this and doing, and getting it done. This is, uh, some great, it's a long time coming.
And, and Amanda and Diane helped me get this finalized so quickly from last week, so we could vote on it tonight.
Absolutely, thank you. Okay, now, um, take us down pavement, rockwood street, just to clarify for everyone's records. It was, uh, a vote not to support, three to one.
Yeah, hang on, though, um, from advisory, um, Stephen suggested maybe we want to revisit the home rule petition, and I'm not sure.
Oh, that's right.
I'm not sure what the concern is there. I don't know.
I had a call, I spoke to, um, I spoke to somebody, I can't remember who it was at this point, somebody, uh, about this home rule thing.
Yeah.
Um, and they're concerned that we, one thing was, maybe we were rushing to do it this year. And the, we wait a year, because it's not gonna change anything in the next year. We've got plenty of time with the timeline that's established that we have to do things, so maybe don't rush into this home rule, so we're not penalized for fighting it if we, for any grants that we're applying for in the next year. Like, right now, as far as they know we're complying, we're not.
Yeah.
We're saying we're making a plan. Um, we don't need to do this, because we have till twenty-twenty, we have plenty of time before it kind of takes effect.
I, it's sort of two, I think I heard Chris Owen feels that way, too, the planning, but my sense was, I wouldn't disagree, but maybe we should at least file, um, language or something, so I would hate to say, hey, yeah, we're gonna go ahead with this, and then a year later say, no, no, we're not, you know, I feel like we should upfront at least submit. So I don't know how you can do it, uh, but.
I don't think we need to say anything. We can remain silent.
Yeah, I know, but it, it looks funny. I think you'd, that'd be silent, and then later on, I would rather be upfront, so that they are aware that we're not happy with it. Without, without, I'm not saying we should oppose it, but.
Uh, I'm gonna recognize Paul in a second, but I want to make a comment. I also, it caught me a little unaware. I've done a little bit of research in the last week on this, and I believe even some of the, frankly, this is still even in public comment. It's a little bit early. I feel that it's kind of a strong, a strong thing to do, and I don't want, we don't know, I think Paul knows a fair amount about it, I think Chris does, but there actually is no rush, and I've looked into that, and I actually advocate for staying silent. I actually think that, you know, stay silent till you find out more, because really, it's not coming any hard requirements onto the town for a couple of years. And I actually kind of advocate, I actually would change my vote on this one. In fact, I should have said that at the very beginning. Let's talk about the things we voted on. Uh, but I've recognized Paul, he had his, uh, physical hand raised.
Okay, so this a, a whole bunch of things, I guess, I should reply to. But I want to make another point first. The other point is that as you may know, we've been trying to get out of the M B T A district for probably more than a decade. And that started way back when we tried to get the M B T A to supply the opportunity called the ride in the town of Sherburne, because we were not getting any service at all. And they considered it, the M B T A considered it and said, no, they would not provide any service to the town. So I asked the M B T A, we're getting assessed and paying for the M B T A, because we're in the district and we're getting no service that I want, that Sherburne wanted to get out, and they said, well, you have to be part of a transportation district, so we hunted around, we found this thing called the Metro West Regional Transit Authority. We joined them and are good members of them. And so then I went back to the M B T A and I said, gee, we'd like to get out, and their answer was, well, times are hard, we're financially strapped. We'll, we don't want to do it now. We'll do it in time. In other words, they like the money we pay. The money comes off the cherry sheet upfront. So it's not an appropriation that we even do. It's just money that disappears for which we get nothing. Now, they already know that we want to get out of the district. I think there isn't anybody in the community, if they have been here long enough, would would know that we are getting nothing from the M B T A other than paying a lot of money, so we want to get out of it. So that, that's point number one. We should have done this home rule petition years ago. Point number two is, when you vote a home rule petition, it has to go through the legislative process, it takes time. So just the fact that the town meeting has a vote doesn't take us out of the M B T A district. It sets the process in motion. It may take a year. It may take two years. We may have to negotiate something with the M B T A or the legislature to continue to provide funding for a period of time to the M B T A. So if we don't start that process now and we wait to file this thing, when we're at the point where the rubber meets the road, you still have to add a year or two before we actually get to the, to the good result. Point number three, I think it's important not only for Sherburne, but for a number of M B T A communities to vote this, because it's a way of telling the legislature and the H C D, hey, you better back off from the draconian regulations. Comments are, are, are due to the H C D by March thirty-one. The indications are they're not disposed to back off. But if they know that the cost of them pushing this and not changing their regulation is that communities will be opting out. That could very well provide the push needed to give serious consideration to changing these requirements that they're proposing to adopt. These requirements are gonna be adopted this year. They're not gonna be adopted a couple of years from now. And the, the feedback I'm getting now is no matter how well-written our letter is, it's not going to take effect, so we need a little more oomph behind our letter than simply the words on a piece of paper.
All right, um.
All those reasons, I think we should leave it on. And if we get to town meeting and we decide not to go forward with it, there's always the chance to say, okay, let's not go forward with it. But if you don't have it on the warrant, then you have no opportunity to do anything until essentially next year.
All right, I have three questions relative to that, but I'll hear from other people. Uh, George?
I have some questions, just, um, as, I hate things that come up, and then maybe it's from my experience on advisory, that's, you know, we just started talking about this last week. Are there unintended consequences of doing a home rule petition? Like, are we then not eligible for certain grants if we're not a member of the M B T A community? Um, we're, I, and you talk about all the benefits of it, Paul, but there can't be, can't all just be benefits of leaving. I mean, there's gotta be something, there's gotta be, uh, I, I just want to know the other side of it, like, why? There, there's gotta be grants and stuff that we're not eligible for if we're not an M B T A community. Is that true?
No.
No?
The M B T A doesn't give grants. It takes money.
But do you have to be an eligible community to apply for certain grants?
No, not that I'm aware of. Never heard such a thing.
You're saying they just take money and we get no benefit from it, is what you're, you're stating as fact that we get zero benefit and all they do is take our money?
That's. That's been the case for at least ten years. And I'm out, as I say, I asked them to provide benefit, they admit that they don't provide any benefit.
Okay, no, I'm, I'm just kept questioning it just because I want to make sure that we're not rushing to a quick decision. And shoot ourselves in the foot down the road by saying, oh, we shouldn't have done, this home rule had these other consequences once we voted on it. That we don't, that we didn't think of, or we didn't talk.
Issue, the issue today is, is it on the warrant? We're not going to actually vote.
I get that, but before I vote to, you know, we voted to support it, but we, I want to ask these questions, I'm not saying I'm not supporting. I want questions, I want to make sure there's no unintended consequences, other than, you know, we're taking Paul's word as gospel. And no offense, Paul, but I just want to ask the questions.
So this only authorizes the board to do something, number one. So we never have to do it, we never actually, we have to file the home rule petition. So you can take, as long as you want to conduct whatever investigation you want to have. And we're not actually voting the home rule petition for. Until town meeting, so there's plenty of time to. Do whatever homework we want to do. All I'm saying is, we're finalizing the warrant today. Why not have it on the warrant?
Okay, uh, Mary Ann.
Yeah, um, I, I kind of looked at it in the same way George did, I appreciate everything Paul has, has said about the process. Of uh, of uh, declaring home rule, et cetera, and, and the fact that there wouldn't be any downside right now, but. Just looking for downsides, you know, turning over the last stone, looking for downsides. Uh, it occurs to me that just the fact that. Uh, we have, we have passed a town meeting, a declaration that, that we're intending. Possibly eventually to declare home rule. Uh, it, it could, it, it could have ripple effects through uh, through other. Uh, agencies at the, at the state level from which we might want to get some funding. Um, and I don't know what those ripple effects are, it's just sort of a generalized anxiety about it. And the, the other thing is that um, I find it. A little bit hard to argue that we get no benefit from uh, MBTA. Uh, obviously, we don't have an MBTA station, they don't provide any service in Sherburne, but. Sherburne people use the Natick, you know, commuter rail a lot. And it seems to me, you know, in the future, if we want to lobby MD, MBTA. To provide better parking, so people in Sherburne could use it. If, if we're not an MBTA community, we don't have any standing there, and I don't like the bylaw, any, this, this forty eighth. Of forty A, section three A, any more than, than you do, Paul, I think it's a terrible law. And ill and ill-conceived. But, but still, I'd like to just wait, I mean, Tom Innes coming up very quickly in two weeks. I don't quite see the urgency of, of getting this on the warrant, when we could, if we decided it is urgent. After the fact, I mean, we could call a special town meeting if it's, if, if it's that urgent, but I think we need to wait and see. What the final rule is, and I agree, it'll probably not be much different from what we're seeing now, but.
Let me ask a clarifying question, does, does MWRTA, you know, the bus service, does that part of MBTA?
No, separate.
Yeah, it was started by, I can't remember his name, I've worked with him, uh, he just retired, the fellow who actually started it, very ingenious. The MBDA, I believe, gave him funding, I believe they did have, because he got more done, he could do, MBTA has a problem where they have too much money. And not enough for a skill set to actually like execute a lot of stuff, and he got a lot done with the commuter rail parking and stuff like that.
Yeah, a lot, a lot, yeah.
I, I feel, I feel ashamed, I can't remember, he's a good guy, and he just retired. Um, so I guess I have four questions for Paul, um, how much do we pay, that's taken off, does anyone know how much we pay? Until the MBTA that's taken off.
Thirty one thousand a year.
Anyone care a year?
I mean, to not be an MBTA community and to declare home rule are kind of two separate votes, right?
Not sure, I think it is to take us out of the MB, I think that's what the home rule petition is.
The home rule petition is.
Yeah, dream, move us as that.
It is, okay, all right.
My second question is, uh, so Paul, you'd stated that we actually asked for busing or, or um, for transportation. And I don't expect you to know this, but was there enough, do you think there's actual documentation that we actually did that, so if we do this, we fight the fight. We state, we actually asked for this and they turned us down, and we, we provide documentation that we actually did that and.
Somewhere.
Correspondence or whatever else.
At one point, a long time ago, I worked here for seventeen years, I think, eight, no. Uh, eighteen years, there was a bus that went to the West Natick.
Yeah, that's right.
Yes, that was the, that was the MW, Metro West Regional Transit.
Oh, okay, I didn't know what it was, I just, I knew that, I just, I just sparked, I just had a memory that there was a bus, but I don't think anybody used it, so they stopped.
Right, that was an experiment that we tried, I mean, the, the MWRTA group. Are willing to provide service to Sherburne. And so we asked them to provide that bus, there wasn't enough use, but they remain available. To provide any other service that we might ask them. Contrast to the MBTA that basically said, no, we don't have enough money, and send us your check.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask about this, um, it seems to me that a little Sherburne declaring home rule. Would maybe have some effect, but it would be, it would be great if other communities like us were to join in a sort of. Collective uh, home rule movement, uh, and I'm wondering if it might be worth. Um, just holding off and trying to do some uh, some organizing amongst small communities that. Would be really adversely impacted as much as Sherburne would, and I'm sure there, there are a number of them.
Our, our neighbor across the river Dover, I think would be just effectively affected as we are.
You know, I bet you that, I bet you I'd hurt our chances of getting it approved by the legislature. If the legislature looks and sees that like half of MWRT, or half of MBTAs is pulling a mutiny and just bailing on them. I bet you they wouldn't approve it, or if they lose a little Sherburne, they'd be like, who cares? You know, I, I might see it as what he called to be the first sand in our glass, or whatever it is, might be the first, the first uh, crack in the dike. You know, I mean, because we, we leave, we leave the rest to comment, because honestly, I, I think that'd be like. I don't know, I'm just gonna make that twenty five percent of the communities probably in our situation.
Yeah, that could be, but the forty A, section three A uh, law. Uh, that's being uh, debated and will be probably passed kind of the way it is. Uh, that, that's, the MBTA has nothing to do with that, right, the MBTA is separate. This is, the law is coming from DHCD, from.
Yeah, so I should confess that when I wrote the, the home rule petition. I could have just addressed forty A, section three A, and taken us out of that, but I saw. That for at least fourteen years, fifteen years. We have been paying, so you take, what was the amount, thirty thousand a year, multiply it times fourteen years. For nothing. They never got back, I had left it with them, as soon as their situation got a little better, they'd work with us and get us out. So we'd be fully transferred to, to the regional transit authority that we had signed up with. They never got back to us, and yet we've paid them. All of this money, we can do this article without getting out of the MBTA district. But I added the MBTA piece because it's just been a long simmering issue for the community.
Personally, if I was getting the MD, I, I am, I looked into a little bit more the MBTA than even the housing thing, and I, it, it seems like a scam. I'm sorry, it does, you know, but the exception is the MBTA did actually buy the actual rail that goes through town, it hasn't been owned by CSX for five, six years. Actually owned by MBTA, as opposed to they piloted, they might pilot some uh, computer rail stuff out through it, but until they actually do that. Um, I'm, I actually, I actually be more likely to support this article with removal of the MBTA district than I am for the housing point alone. Be honest with you.
Let me ask you a question, speaking of that with the rail, I hadn't thought of it till just now, Eric. Uh, would we have less standing with the MBTA if we want to negotiate them to put up gates? So we have safer crossings in town? If we're not in a community, will they talk to us?
I don't know, so gates are regulated by DPU, Department of Public Utilities, it's the strangest, strangest thing.
It's not MBTA then.
Yeah, but they're right, the gates themselves are regulated, I mean, MBTA would actually fund it possibly, I don't know.
Non-MBTA community.
Well, yeah, I know, I know.
I mean, we'd have to tie this.
Think about again, again, I think it's premature to do it this soon, um, that's, that. Point, there's questions that come up, like, that we hadn't even thought of yet. As Stephen Sigh said in the chat here from advisory, he's, they're, they're in the same boat that. We haven't had time to really analyze this and decide if, you know, we, as a proponent of it, Paul, I, I understand. There's a lot of good reasons for this, but I also, I, I worry until we've had time to research if there's other unintended consequences.
Get the language real quick before I say anything else, hold on one second, so many pages down.
It's Article seventeen, Eric.
Right, uh, Paul, when you say the definition of the MBTA community, you mean it to cover both the uh, forty A, section three A. And the MBTA.
Yeah, I added both in there, as I say, one was a longstanding town issue. As I say, we've been working on for at least fourteen years, the other.
Okay, I.
I would, I would, I think this should be on the warrant, I'm not saying I don't know whether I support it or not. But I've always boned in of leaving things on the warrant, so the town, so the citizens can have a discussion about it, whether advisory supports it or not, or we support it or not. I don't think we should be removing it from the warrant, but I, but um, we should, I think it's something that should be discussed.
Also, after reading again, it's vague enough, and it's broad enough, I think it'd be interesting to go, but let me ask, I guess, Paul, or, or anyone that knows this question. For zoning articles, if something's voted down, it can't come up for two more years, if it gets voted down, are we um, limited in a timeframe, we can bring it up again if, if something changes?
No, that's only for zoning.
Okay.
I guess a corollary to what George said, and I don't disagree, is that if we can't explain it very well, it's not going to be very helpful.
I have my list of questions, my fourth question is, and I didn't ask yet, Paul, will you present this at town meeting?
Well, I'll speak to it, but I'm thinking if, if it may very well provoke a chance to talk to the MBTA. And say to them, we'll stay in the district if you do the following, A, B, and C. Uh, and we can also have that discussion with uh, with the community, housing and development. To say that we'll stay as an MBTA community, if they drop the requirement for seven hundred and fifty houses. Maybe they, if they go to a hundred and fifty, or a hundred and ten, or something like that. So it may give us some leverage to, to negotiate with either or both.
But, uh, Paul, yeah, I, I, I've thought about that too, I appreciate it, but it, I kind of doubt that. Uh, a- as you said, that they're going to make any huge changes to forty A, section three A. Between now and uh, and the time that it comes up for our vote. And right now, we're at seven fifty, even if we took it down to ten percent, that's still one, one hundred and fifty some, which is still a stretch. Uh, now that we don't have the Coolidge Street in place, and we don't know if we're gonna ever have it in place for sure. Um, I don't know, I think if we're gonna go that route and negotiate. Uh, from that point of view, I would say we'd go way down to five percent. Rather than ten percent on the MBTA, MBTA community's housing requirement, but. Gosh, there's just a lot to talk about here, and I don't feel ready to vote.
I'm, I'm, well, right now, we said we did vote, so if, if the board wants to stay as if in action, you'd have to actually make a motion to actually reconsider our previous vote. And make a different vote, I'm actually inclined to take no additional action on this, and then maybe see how it evolves over the, up and feeding now in town meeting, and maybe it's a meeting we voluntarily say. The board recommend, oh, change, I'll recommend no action or something like that, um, that's what my gut tells me, I, you know, I also am concerned that we're doing it a bit quickly. I've been learning more about it since last week, and I look to learn more about it as well, and um.
I, I concur with you in, with a slightly different twist, is that, and Paul made this point earlier, it's authorizing the select board to do this, but it's not saying we have to do it. So all we're asking is permission to do this, and so we can continue to evaluate it and decide if we want to do, file a home rule petition or not. But we, this would give us the ability to do it if we decide it is beneficial for us to do it, does that make sense, Paul?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, actually, that does make sense, Jeff, because that gives us the leeway, and we can explain it town meeting, we have more research to do.
Yeah.
Done deal, but we want to have this option, uh, the nuclear option, if you like, yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, so, so again, if we take no vote whatsoever, the vote remains five oh to support. Uh, does anyone want to make a motion relative to, to change that?
And just leave it.
All right, just making sure, putting it out there, so it's a rediscussion. Okay, so based on a good discussion also, and thank you Paul for the information, so it remains to support that five oh. Okay, so moving on, we've already, um, again, done what Rockwood.
One thing, one thing, um, Diane or Genie, um, this has nothing to do with that one, but. The things you voted on on that Saturday are reading on here, support five zero, I was not there. So like the thirty, Article thirty two, the citizens petition, there's the one, there's a few others that were voted on that.
We didn't invite, we didn't vote on thirty two yet.
The climate change one or whatever.
Not, I'm stupid, printout.
Oh, yeah. It's, it's the, it's the, the, um.
I just want, I just don't, I want, I don't want, I don't want it to say five oh on two twelve, because I wasn't there.
Yeah.
I'm changing it.
Okay, anything is two twelve to subtract one unless, except for Rockwood Street, Rocker Street was uh, not support three one.
Correct.
I think the only other, the only other one we have is the Article thirty one, the open space subdivision.
Well, I'm just, there was questions in advisory and a couple more that I was going to bring up, the community center lease renewal. You know, we're doing this study of COA, um, senior center, so it was suggested by one advisory member that we could. Consider reducing the term for twenty years to three years, depending on what comes out of that study, but I think, I don't think we need to do that, because my. My feeling is we could make the lease be up to twenty years, and we can make it be less.
Yeah, if it's three years, just don't even take it off town meeting, because you don't need to have them approve it for three years.
Yeah.
Um.
We don't know yet, so I think if we have this in there, it's appropriate and we can do less than that.
Yeah, that just authorizes again the select board.
Yeah.
We don't have to do twenty years.
Yeah, okay.
Leave it.
All right, uh, was there anything else? I don't think there was. I only saw the second advisory, not the first one.
Yeah, I would vote, I want to just talk about Article thirty one for a second, I am very confused by that article, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Yes.
I, I don't think it's well thought out, and I would vote to not support, I would give a motion to not support Article thirty one.
This is the one I wanted to give a little intro, so before we actually have a discussion about it, I talked to town council today, and I also talked to Chris Owen today. So it is a zoning article, so uh, per, um, like this MGL forty, section, section five. This must have a hearing before the planning board, so we have two options right now. One, the select board, to get the process going, needs to actually, again, when I say needs to, it means it's up to us. To vote to refer to the planning board for a public hearing, and the planning board has to have a prescribed public hearing, because it's zoning, before town meeting. So as, here's, here's my thought on the process here, one, we can make two separate votes, you can vote to support or not support, and you can vote to refer or not refer. Or you can simply vote to refer and wait till it comes back to us, you know, from the planning board. Um, I don't know if they, if planning board has been requested to hear this or not, but either way, it is dead without a referral to the planning board.
Well, there was, uh, later breaking news, it was rejected at the Board of Health last night.
Not.
I think, I think, I think it's, I don't want to waste work time, to be honest, I think, I think I just vote not support this thing. It's not well thought out, it's very confusing, um, it's, I, I just think, I don't want to waste anybody else's time on it.
I, I personally do believe honestly in, in going through the process, Scott, I, I don't think, I don't like, I don't want to say I'm being an opinion what it's like, but I don't like killing it administratively and not allowing people to vote on it. So let me do this before we, let me do this. I'm going to make a motion to refer this to the planning board to have, so they can hold a due process public hearing. I think they can do it on, on, on April fifth. I've talked to Chris Owen about this just hours ago. And so that they can actually hold appropriate public hearings, so this is going to appear before town meeting.
Second, particularly where the statute says the board shall do refer this, all zoning arts, the word shall, the general laws tells me that we shouldn't be playing games with not referring a zoning article to the planning board.
Okay, that makes sense.
That makes sense. The only thing is I think we have to print the warrant, you know, by that time, so the.
It's a citizen petition.
Yeah.
Take it off, so it's a matter of whether we support it or not. But I think Eric's right administratively, and Paul's right. We have heard of the planning board, but we can also vote on my motion to not support it. That's the same.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay, so I have a motion in a second to refer to the planning board. All in favor, Jeff?
Uh, I.
Mary Ann?
I.
Paul?
I.
George?
I.
And I am I as well. And now, let's have a discussion about do we want to support this yet or not?
And I made a motion not to support it.
You did.
So if I could, the last time this was before us, I'm not sure if we had the full board there or not, or there was before. But the, the way it ended, as I understood it was that the article proponent says that there was a gap in the, the legal system, and it ought to be fixed, and we said, can you go work with the relevant boards and see if you can come up with something that will take care of the problem? And if that results in the withdrawal of the article, that would, that would be fine. If that results in some different, slightly different motion at town meeting, that would be fine, but we don't know what the result of that would be. So I would rather not take a position on supporting or opposing it until that process runs its course. And if they, if the report back is, no, it's not fixable, or no, we can't, we can't reach agreement on it, then I think we should take a vote. But at this point, taking a vote not to support it discourages people working together collaboratively to try and come up with something.
Paul, did you not just hear Jeff say that Board of Health already said they don't support it? They've already gone to that other board, and it didn't work.
For enough, and it was she, she had to re, she, she wasn't allowed to vote, the citizen wasn't allowed to vote.
Board, and they didn't support it either. So I mean, I, I think I, I take your point, Paul, that the process, I mean, we have to respect citizens' right to do this. But they, they do have input now from planning board, Board of Health, advisory, select board, and none of it was supportive because basically it's a very confused article, and I, I, I could never vote even to support this coming to town meeting. It's just really badly done.
Well, how are we going to address the gap?
So here, here's the issue I have. Let me ask, let me stay with the issue I have, is that I, I, my preference, I do, well, I'd vote after hearing back from the planning board. So Marion, did the planning board actually discuss this? I know they needed a hearing, but did they have an agenda item where they actually discussed this and made a vote on it? I didn't think they did, but you're better than all of them.
Yeah, they, I, I, they didn't take a vote on it. I'm quite sure they didn't. They, but they made a very clear statement that it was not appropriate as a zoning bylaw, and it had to go back to Board of Health and Planning Board, and they were, would be willing to discuss it with Board of Health as a planning board with Board of Health, but as, as the petition now stands, they, they wouldn't support the petition as it now stands. That's my recollection. Maybe.
And that's based on discussion, not a vote. That's based on just listening to.
It wasn't a vote.
Diane?
Um, I believe in a prior pattern, you had a memo from Chris Owen saying that the planning board did not support that article. And that was in a, in a select board package from a prior meeting. I just, off the top of my head, I don't remember what meeting it was, but I'll find it and resend it to the board.
I thought it was based on him, them not having reviewed it at that time, but I don't know, but, but the Board of Health definitely voted not to support it for zip.
Remind me, what's the date of town meeting?
Twenty-six. Oh, 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 they're both at twenty-six. The, the town meeting is twenty-sixth of April, and I think the election is twenty-sixth May, maybe. I forget. Yeah. But town meeting twenty-sixth April.
Your, it's advisory hearings March twenty-sixth and town meetings.
Oh, that's what, yeah, that's it. Yeah. You knew what I meant.
Yeah, I know what you meant, Joe.
I, the fundamental problem with this citizen petition is that it's proposing to insert a new Board of Health regulation into the zoning bylaw when the regulation doesn't exist in the Board of Health regulations, and one could argue that maybe the Board of Health regulations should be changed to fill that gap that she talks about, and it's true, but it's not a zoning issue.
Well, just so you know, basically after advisories discussion last night, I called town council. They gave a quick, they can give a deeper look to it as well and confirm some of that stuff, but didn't have time to do it, but they actually found this administrative flaw that essentially been the process that I discovered here. I'd like to look at it further. Me personally, as much as I want to get this done, I, if we take a vote now, I'm probably abstaining because I just think it's fair to hear back from the planning board, an official hearing process. That's usually how it's supposed to happen. Maybe it's our fault, it hasn't happened yet. Maybe it's whatever, you know what I mean? I'm not going to say it's our fault. I mean, I guess someone should have known that, should have gone through, you know, the planning board hearing at some point there. But I would probably abstain until it goes through a planning board hearing. That's what every other one has done, as long as I've been involved with town politics. So any article goes to a planning board hearing, then goes to the select board, you know, to support or not support. Yes, that's my opinion on it.
I agree. I don't think you should have to abstain. We should just decide not to, to vote on it.
I have a motion, I have a motion to not support if I'd like to.
Okay. Well, I'll second your motion that, that.
Still have discussion on it.
To allow the vote. I, 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 I'm not sure I agree with your recommendation, but I would support having a vote if you want to have a vote.
Um, okay. Any other discussion? We have a motion in a second to, to not support this, this article. Okay, let me think. So it's a negative advisory last night. They actually voted to say, they took a motion to support it, and everyone said nay, so that's kind of how that one was done. So yay vote would be to not support it. So I guess all in favor, Jeff?
Well, I'm going to abstain. I think I, I, I wanted to have a motion that allowed us to have a vote, but I, I would like to hear from the planning board, so I'm going to abstain.
Okay, Mary Ann?
I, I, I don't know if I'm voting yay or nay, but you know I'm against this article. I don't think.
Yes, yeah.
Well, I, I'm going to tell you that this event, I always vote at the end, but I am going to abstain as well, just because I want to hear back. I think it's likely that I would not support it, but I, I want to hear from anyone. In fact, I'll probably attend a planning board meeting or a hearing. I'll probably, you know, listen in and thoroughly in the presentation and so on like that. So Mary Ann, I guess vote means you do not support this article, and nay vote means you support it, and abstain means you abstain for whatever reason.
Oh, this was heard before the planning board, so you might just check with Chris.
Okay.
And see if that counts as a planning board hearing. I think it does.
And not as a hearing, a hearing has to have the mail, the advertise, the public, you know, the newspaper advertisement.
Okay.
And you said they didn't vote either.
Meeting, so I mean, I'm not sure.
People fat, they're going to do it because they're actually going to open the, they're actually going to have a hearing to look at the subdivision rules of regulations for right of way width. So I'm actually doing a hair hearing the same day, and the mailings all at the same time and everything else. So Marion, I guess, how do you vote?
I guess, do I vote yay? I don't know. Tell me, I, I.
I'll explain it again. Does a yay vote means you do not support this? No vote means you do support it, and abstain means you simply abstain, which is what I'm listening to.
Uh, yay, I do not support.
Okay, Paul, how do you vote?
So I vote no, because I want to wait till I hear from the planning board.
Okay, and I'm guessing Jeff, I mean, George, I'm sorry.
I have a, yay, yay, I vote again. Yeah, I don't want to support this.
Okay, I'm going to vote abstain because I want to hear from the planning board, so I'm going to wait till I hear from them versus supported.
So we have two yays, two, one nay, and two abstains. So how does?
We need to expand.
Yays and one nay, doesn't that?
I think it votes it down. Yeah, you have two yeses, you have one no, you have two abstains. You know, if we hear back from the planning board, you know, I'm in today, a motion to actually reopen it, maybe no one reopen.
Yeah, we, we need to hear from the planning board, I think.
Yeah, we need one like this every year. We had the fur one last year, you know, we.
Yeah, yeah, that was a weird one.
Every single year.
Yeah.
Good discussion.
Okay.
Okay, now, is there, is there anything else I missed? I believe I should clean up our, our warrants.
The only thing I was going to say, when they discussed advisory, it seems like they're trying very hard to get the citizen to pull the Rockwood Street article.
Yeah.
I think they got closer to convincing, because the thing is, is it can't possibly get supported because they don't have any numbers in there. And, and if it gets voted down, it could give a negative taint to having it on the agenda a year from now.
I mean, undoubtedly, I've advised them twice.
Yeah.
Think Stephen Si even more eloquently advised them as well. At this point, I think it is what it is. It is, he must take it.
Oh, go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, Paul.
So can I make a motion to add an article for the tree removal?
Yes, thank you. First, let's make a motion, open the warrant.
Open the warrant.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor, Jeff?
All right.
Mary Ann?
I.
Paul?
I.
George?
I.
I might as well. Okay, do I have a motion relative to have a, have an article for tree removals to fund up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
So moved.
The mo, the motion, we need to clarify, the motion is to create a new article, to take it out of capital, create a new article for that.
We already took it out of capital.
Yeah, so we don't need to take, we already did that, so just create an.
For it. Yeah, okay. So I'll second that.
Okay.
Under, just under discussion.
Yep.
If we decide to fund it with ARPA or any other funding source, or we get a state grant or whatever else, A, we don't have to vote in favor of this article. We can always ask that there be no action taken on the article. This just holds it for town meeting. Secondly, even if the money is appropriated, we don't have to spend it. So if we decide we're going to use ARPA funds, or if we decide we're going to get money from the state, whatever.
We've never decided funding sources when we're discussing articles in the past. Left up to advisory and the finance director and, you know, we, we're, we're never voting on funding sources, so I think it's simple. We vote for this tree article. And that's it.
Yeah, it's just authorization. That's all it is. I think we have a motion in a second to include it. All in favor, Jeff?
All right.
Mary Ann?
I.
Paul?
I.
George?
I.
Okay, do I have, we have a motion to close the warrant?
Eric, you forgot to vote again.
Okay, I.
Now, before, so do we vote, because in opening the warrant, we're removing the utility vehicle, UTV.
Already did, we already did that.
But the warrant technically wasn't open then. We're taking that.
We weren't, we didn't have to do that because it was, as Paul said, under the line in the capital article.
Oh, okay, that's a good point. I forgot.
When we were discussing the capital.
Yeah, 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Totally, totally correct.
So I voted to close the warrant.
A motion to close, second by Paul. Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
I.
Mary Ann?
I.
Paul?
I.
And George?
I.
I might as well. Very good.
Now, Stephen has asked us, do we need to, who will create the language for the new trees?
I'm sure Amanda, Diane can work with Amanda to get that, the changed in the warrant article. So then warrant, maybe, maybe next week, we have a quick line item on our agenda to review the word language that Amanda provides.
Yeah, it's going to be like any other fiscal article ever done.
Exactly.
It's going to be easy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Change those two words. Yeah, exactly.
So, so one thing that Stephen also brought up, and I think it was Mary Wolf originally, was on the supplementals, we have to have the dollars. That's not below the line, apparently. We have to have dollars for the supplementals, which is at the start of the checklist. So I'm thinking, but, but they don't know the numbers now. Remember the supplementals, there's still some snow and ice that came in from last week and some police overtime, so I'm proposing that.
Mary, Mary just chatted that it is below the line.
Oh, is it? But I thought we had to have.
Jeff, Jeff, we've changed those. We've changed those right up until town meeting.
Okay.
It's below the line.
All right. Okay, my bad.
So I want to make a motion.
Jenny has her hand up too.
Yeah.
What, what, what's the motion? Is this Walter, are we going to finally close the warrant?
Yes, to, to, well, didn't we vote on closing the warrant? I want to vote to, to approve and issue the warrants, come by and sign it.
Okay, before I do that, then let me hear from Jenny.
Um, I just want, in the past, the warrant, the actual warrant doesn't have any numbers of supplemental. Those come out of the advisory report.
So as Mary, Mary wrote in the chat box again, advisory
Below the line.
For their hearing, which I'm sure Deb will have those, but by the time we have the advisory hearing on the twenty-sixth, write them to advisory by then.
Okay.
But it doesn't change our vote, and it doesn't change our vote on the warrant. So I'll second Paul's motion to prove and sign the warrant.
Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
I.
Ma, Paul?
I.
George?
I.
And I am also I. Okay.
Before we close the meeting, I just wanted to give a quick update. Diane, and everybody that we can continue to do our executive sessions at six thirty, I can make those schedule and make the practice on Mondays and Wednesdays this spring, so I'm, I'm good for Thursday nights at six thirty, so we can get started here on these marathon executive sessions.
It helps us keep them trim. I, I was hoping, that's my goal, I think. Having them ahead of time forces you to be brief.
This is eight forty-eight. Record show.
Eric, Jenny, Jenny's waving her hand again.
Yes, Jenny.
I have a quick question. So we'll, the warrant's all going to be, I'm going to make the changes. We'll get the the language from Amanda. I'll ask her tomorrow. When do you want to sign it?
When you tell us it's ready.
Yeah. All five have signed this, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, Mary Ann?
Oh, yeah, I just noted there's a question from Steve's eye in, in the chat, and I'm not sure we addressed it. He asks, I think it's related to Article, Article thirty-one, the open space subdivision. Are you getting a full town council review of the language of the petition, or did their review stop at referring it to planning board, or did your review stop at referring it to planning board?
Change a citizen's petition.
Oh, right.
Like that, it appears in the warrant as biased.
As written.
Because they've signed, that's, people have signed it, that's the language.
So that's the language.
That's right.
Nothing we can do about the language. Somebody, people can make motions on the floor of town meeting to maintain, but a citizen's petition is what it is, and.
Well, I'll tell you what I was planning, because, and even council is hesitant to actually say if something's, you know, contradictory or whatever, you know, something can have unintended consequences, but I'll tell you that. So I touched base with Amanda purposely today to, to discuss this thing, and that's where she discovered the, that, you know, administrative flaw, where there's been no hearing with the planning board and so on like that. I was also intending to ask a little bit about, you know, just the issues with overlapping with Board of Health regulations and the Board of Health bylaws as well on this. So I was, I was actually intending to approach her on that as well, and I was going to maybe touch base with a couple of people that simply know the question better than I do. I don't know if anyone has an issue with that, but I thought that was something at least fair to do before the planning board hearing. Stephen, do you have a question, comment?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to say, just from my perspective, it would be helpful to have a full town council opinion on the petition before the public hearing, just to inform advisory discussion. As, as it is the way that you, I'm not, I'm not criticizing the way that you guys are handling this, but now we have a public, a, a a, a planning board hearing that's going to be happening after the advisory hearing, and I, I mean, essentially, uh, we have, we have little hard data to back up the assertions or the discussion, I should say, about this petition at the advisory hearing. So that's part of the reason why I wanted to get a full legal review, because uh, many people who have looked at this have had major misgivings about it and believe that there is. uh, many people who have looked at this have had uh, major uh, misgivings about it and believe that there is a lot of legally um, questionable or downright um, uh, sort of erroneous language. Um, and so we kind of wanted to get a full town council review so that we had that to refer to in our discussion. So that's the reason why I ask.
One of the things, you know, I struggle with and I think we always doing this, you need to ask the right question. So if say I want a full review, then I look at it and say, yes, it's a bylaw. It's going to change a bylaw. You have to have a hearing and it'll change a bylaw. That's the answer. So I need a person, I need a better question than that. So what's the question? You know what I mean? Like give it a full review. Yes, it's words and it'll change a bylaw. You know, and I think that, that's kind of the things we struggle with here. I'd like to take that question offline to some degree because I know it's been, I've attended a couple of meetings on this and even I still don't get it. Uh, some, and that's why I was hoping to get some input of a couple of other people to ask the right question to get the answer. Like, and I think one of the more major issues I heard about it is, does it actually overlap? Or, you know, um, with uh, Board of Health bylaws, you know, and it's maybe yes, and maybe, and it still may be legal. I don't know. You know, I mean, it's because town council not going to say, you know, this is good for sure, but you know, I'm trying to say that's different. They're going to tell you how it affects things and what it does. And is it legal or not? And that's one of the things that, you know, I think we always struggle.
Okay, can I, I'll. I can chat with you offline, Eric.
Okay.
Can I just make one legal point on this?
Well, I want to hear from Mary Ann only because her hand is raised and I'll hear from you, Paul.
That's quick. Um, I'm not sure how you handle uh, misstatements of fact in uh, in the uh, warrant article, in the citizen's petition. I mean, it's not, um, it's not a legal question, but without uh, knowing the facts. It's hard for the legal counsel to provide advice on whether it should be, that statement should be there, this or that statement should be there or not.
You have to inform them. You have to inform them if something is factually incorrect. You have to basically inform them on that. And that, it's kind of vague. It has to be very specific. The vaguer question you ask counsel, the vaguer answer you're going to get. I've learned that, believe me, over twenty years.
And, and I also think, I don't want to waste a lot of town council's time on this. It's as Mary. Point on that is, we need to just tell the citizens like this is not, like this is why we don't support this because there's misstatement of fact in this article, like we don't. And, and that's something you can say at town meet, as a citizen, as a select board member, we voted against this because of this misstatement of fact and that, that hopefully sways people not to vote for this article.
Yeah, one of several reasons is the mistake, the misstatement of facts.
Yeah.
Okay, we did vote on it. I want to hear from Paul, who actually used the wrong type of emoji, but he gave me a thumbs up, but it's good enough.
I was going to say that there's a complete legal review done by the attorney general for anything that's passed by town meeting. So if we pass something. The attorney general could, i- if there's a problem with it, the attorney general would throw it out. And that's the process because town meeting and open town meeting, you, you actually want to encourage citizens to come forward. And, and I know in my experience as a town council, there are lots of people well intentioned, but they come up with things that are citizen petitions and they, they often contain errors and often there are approaching things the wrong way and you, you try and work with them, but at all times you need to, to be cognizant of the fact that, that's a democracy and that every citizen has the right to come forward and they should be encouraged to come forward.
Okay, I'll end it there. And I actually slightly disagree with that. I think citizens should actually go to the planning board to advocate for zoning articles. They shouldn't actually make citizen petitions, but whatever. Okay, um, I think that's enough thing, enough uh, discussion on something I already voted on. And uh, do I have any other?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi, this is crazy. What am I doing? Is there a Bruins game?
We watched some college basketball, Jeff.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
And George?
I.
And I'm actually going to vote I as well. All right, very good. Thank you all.
Good night. Ciao, guys.
We're going. Stay high to Miss Moro. Happy birthday.